Thank you. And good morning, everyone. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcements be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and the Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. Mr. Decker will please call the roll to take attendance and the members obviously can say a couple of words to make sure that you will be, image will be displayed on the screen. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. It's good to see you all.
Councilman Dom?
Morning, Council President and good morning colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gattie?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here today.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President and good morning colleagues. Happy Thursday and thank you all so much for your work on the tech staff.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleague. Glad to see you all this morning as we are now into the fall season.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gem?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President and good morning colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Shame on America that there is no justice for Breonna Taylor.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Thank you tech staff and thank you viewing public.
Morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleague. Having some connection issues I see with my computer, but hopefully I'll work that out.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and good morning colleagues. I thought I saw Councilman O'Neil. Maybe he's having some technical challenges.
Morning.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez?
Buenos dias, buenos dias, buenos dias. Happy to be here this morning.
Morning, Councilman. Good to see you.
Good morning, everyone. This is Mark Scola, President for the hearing, meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here.
Morning, Councilman.
Council President Clark?
Morning. Thank you all very much and we have established the quorum. We will now come to order. Despite the great need, there will be no indication today. We will however observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and the citizens during this current public health crisis. Thank you all very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 17th, 2020, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, September 17th, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Stand and approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is the request for leave of absence and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. And our next order of business is communications. And the clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in his possession. To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September 17th, 2020, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at a session on September 10th, 2020. Bill numbers 200188, 200303, 200354, and 200365. And I respectfully request and submit for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city-owned lots and pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the first councilmatic district of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the first councilmatic district pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act, all under certain terms and conditions. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including previous resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to a committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment and I just want to thank you all very much in advance for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, will please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by its members.
Councilwoman Parker offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing David T. Jones for his accomplishments and numerous contributions to the City of Philadelphia on the occasion of his departure from the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services and congratulating him on his new position as Director of the Division of Substance Use Prevention and Recovery for the State of Illinois Department of Human Services.
Thank you. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Ludlow Street.
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Benny Swans, founding president of Philadelphia's nationally acclaimed crisis intervention network.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez offers one resolution declaring September 15th, 2020 through October 15th, 2020 as Hispanic Heritage Month throughout the City of Philadelphia to honor the role that Latinos have played and continue to play in the economic, cultural, and social development of our city and nation.
Thank you. Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Section 11104 of the Philadelphia Code entitled curb cuts to define curb cut and add prohibitions on curb cuts in order to facilitate the construction of transit platforms.
And that will be referred to committee.
Councilman Dom offers two bills and two resolutions entitled an ordinance amending Bill Number 200351 entitled an ordinance authorizing the operation of sidewalk cafes during the COVID-19 emergency until December 31st, 2020 in areas of the city where such activity currently must be otherwise authorized by special ordinance and allowing expanded activity by currently licensed sidewalk cafe operations. To extend, the date, Bill Number 200351 will remain in effect.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Bill Number 200352 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 11100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled general provisions to authorize the Streets Department to permit closure of the public right-of-way. To extend, the date, Bill Number 200352 will remain in effect.
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring Richard M. Engler upon his retirement as Temple University's president and his contributions to Temple and Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of United States Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg for her instrumental legal career, service to the United States of America, and her relentless work to challenge gender discrimination and ensure equal protections for all Americans.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you so much, Council President. And first, I want to thank all of my colleagues who all supported this resolution. It's amazing. And it bears witness to the kind of woman and leader Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg was. As was written in the resolution, Justice Ginsburg was known for her notable friendships in the Supreme Court with her more conservative colleagues. She valued friendship over politics, which is something I wish were more common today, especially right now. Justice Ginsburg lived a life of persistence. She never gave up fighting and championing laws for gender equality, race equality, equality for sexual orientation, and much more. She wanted to live in a country where people were valued equally and her life's work always led her back to that basic mission. Justice Ginsburg died last Friday as Jews across America were ushering in the Jewish holiday Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. Jewish teaching says that those who die just before Rosh Hashanah are the ones God has held back until the last moment because they were needed the most and were the most righteous, eitzadik in the Hebrew language. I share in the sadness of everyone here for the loss of such an enduring leader and at such a tumultuous time in our country. But the more we tell her story, the more we can hope others will follow in her footsteps. I hope Philadelphians and communities everywhere will take the time to learn more about Justice Ginsburg and continue to tell her story. She is truly someone to cherish in our nation's history. So thank you again to all of you, all my colleagues, for your support in honoring Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And to the viewing public, watch RBG. It's a phenomenal documentary. I've probably seen it now three or four times. It tells a great story and every time I watch it, I learn something new. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers one bill and two resolutions. Councilman Thomas offers the ordinance on behalf of Council President Clark entitled an ordinance authorizing Mark Capriati to install, own, and maintain a proposed sidewalk cafe at 310 West Master Street.
For the committee.
On his own behalf, Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating the Mathematics, Civics, and Sciences Charter School Boys Basketball Team on their successful 2019-2020 season and overall 24-5 record in the Philadelphia Public League Boys Basketball Championships.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the creation of the Philadelphia Arts and Culture Task Force. Councilman O'Neil offers one bill entitled an ordinance removing existing parking meters and regulations as well as establishing an authorized vehicles only regulation in front of 7306 Castro Avenue and both sides of the 7300 block of Elgin Street.
For the committee.
Councilman Scola offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the first councilmatic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city-owned lots and pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the first councilmatic district.
And that will be referred to committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Boys Latin of Philadelphia Charter School, Drexel University, and the Center for Black Educator Development for the launch of the Boys Latin Teaching Fellowship, a partnership that seeks to create a pipeline of male teachers of color in Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing the life and legacy of Malik Aziz for his towering achievements as a civic leader, trailblazer, and champion for returning citizens in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Hu Mag, distribution and founder Rob Schwartz on the occasion of its 10-year anniversary in music distribution.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions and our next order of business is reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for report from the committee on rules.
Thank you, Council President. The Rules Committee reports seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker? Can you please read that report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is deferred Bill Number 20018 entitled an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled miscellaneous by adding a new chapter 213200 entitled Business Improvement Districts and Special Services Districts to establish uniform procedures for the filing of objections by affected property owners against the formation of Business Improvement Districts and Special Services Districts. And Bill Number 200094 entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlay zoning districts by modifying the CTR, Center City Overlay District, Society Hill Elliott, to create additional standards concerning height, parking, signs, and special reviews. And Bill Number 200095 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Walnut Street, Front Street, South Street, and Eighth Street. And Bill Number 200144 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing zoning designations of certain portions of land located within an area bounded by Oxford Street, 19th Street, Poplar Street, and 27th Street. And Bill Number 200160 entitled an ordinance amending Section 14203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled definitions by adding a definition for site clearing, further amending Section 14704 entitled open space and natural resources by making technical changes to regulations regarding development on steep slopes. And Bill Number 200161 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Main Street, Ridge Avenue, Whistler Hickman Creek, the Schuylkill River, and Osborne Street Extended. And Bill Number 200260 entitled an ordinance amending Title 4, Subcode A of the Philadelphia Building Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 3, Permits, and amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14300 entitled administration and procedures by amending the terms and conditions of administrative review. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, I returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, as to add to permit first reading this day of Bill 200018, 20009, 200144, 200160, 200161, and 200260.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 20018, 200094, 200095, 200144, 200160, 200161, and 200260. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports from committee and a next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 200393, 200482, 200483, 200484, 200486, 200489, 200491, and 200492. All of the bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for a possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of these matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 5:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number, the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation and add it to the list. We will now telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes to speak. I think we might have ideal circumstances today. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. Once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony and when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. So we're going to ask that you limit your scope of your testimony to only those certain items that are on the agenda, which could affect callbacks from public comment session. So please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. By continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask Mr. Decker to please read the name of our first speaker. I know.
Mr. President, there are no speakers in the public comments today.
We have, yeah, Mr. Decker, we must find a provision. When in the event that there are no speakers, I do not have to read all of it into the record. But apparently, under the, under the rules that we are operating in as a result of COVID, I apparently have to read it all. But thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We would now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of the resolution on Number 200393?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to enter into a lease with Avenue North Renaissance as tenant for certain properties located in the fifth councilmatic district.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It is moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200482.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1906 North 24th Street located in the fifth councilmatic district.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It is been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200483.
A resolution urging Senator Pat Toomey and Senate leadership to take up an act on the Heroes Act, the Helping Homes Act, and the Moving Forward Act, sweeping and transformational resolutions to address the ongoing economic crisis, co-sponsored by Congressman Dwight Evans and the Philadelphia Congressional Delegation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 20048.
A resolution commemorating the life of legal aid giant and former Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, Thomas Gilv, a founding figure for community legal services, education equity, and the rights of the disabled and the poor, who led a rollicking life in pursuit of law and justice through eight decades of Philadelphia history.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gem for motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Council President, and with eternal gratitude to Thomas Gilv and, and his family, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200486.
A resolution calling on the School District of Philadelphia to promptly negotiate a mutually agreeable new contract with the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers that prioritizes the health and safety of school, staff, and students and acknowledges the contributions of teachers and other staff, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on that resolution.
Thank you, Council President. We support our teachers. We support our childrens. I ask for firm vote.
Mr. President, that resolution was introduced by Councilwoman Gem?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. It was, it was introduced by Councilman Johnson, I believe.
Come on, man. Man, we were on a roll. All right. One little small bump.
I'm a proud co-sponsor.
Second.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200489. Mr. Decker, can't hear you.
He's protesting.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the West Catholic Girls Basketball Team on their successful 2019-2020 season and overall 22-6 record in the Philadelphia Catholic League Girls Basketball Championships.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for motion on that resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200491.
A resolution calling on the Kenny Administration to develop a plan to be more inclusive of city council when creating and implementing emergency public safety measures and restrictions.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. First, let me say I'm having connectivity problems, so I'm not turning on my, my video, but I, I will hold that. An error has been pointed out to me. I will make a correction. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. So please for the record, 200491 will be held for this particular session. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200492.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry to resolve ongoing complications with the state's unemployment system to ensure all eligible Pennsylvanians receive their entitled compensation in a timely manner.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to let everyone know that I did receive a response from Secretary Alexiak, Secretary of Labor and Industry, and I appreciate- Secretary of Labor and Industry, and I appreciate that. And he did explain what he is trying to do during this difficult time to address the fact that many people in Pennsylvania, including many Philadelphians, have not received their unemployment compensation check in months and have been unable to get a response from the department. And I did distribute that to council members and staff. I wanted to thank him publicly for responding to, to us. Nonetheless, I do think it's important to move forward this resolution. I think they are responding in part because of pressure being put upon them to, to raise this issue as a priority, as there are many desperate people who have not received their check in months. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. This move and property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, does that conclude our calendar for today?
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Very much, sir. Ah, man, it's too quick. Got to come up with something else. Prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority?
Uh, Council President?
Yeah.
I'd like to be marked present. It's a good thing I got here about five minutes late because I've attended probably thousands of council meetings and council sessions, and there's nothing close to this one. So there is some good coming out of COVID, I guess. I don't know. But, um, um, thank you and good morning, everyone.
Morning, Councilman. No speeches on behalf of the minority, according to what I have. Speeches on behalf of the majority, I believe. We had Councilman Green, I'm sorry, Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, my co-chair in the Disadvantaged Communities Task Force, as well as Councilmember O., the Chair of the Global and Creative Economy Committee on City Council, as well as Councilmember Brooks. Together, working with them, we were able to put ourselves in a position where we were able to introduce a resolution for the Arts and Culture Task Force. And the thought process there is that, just listening to the arts and culture community, there were a number of things that they wanted to assure would happen as we look at how we recover from COVID, not just looking at how it has physically impacted us, but more importantly, not more importantly, but also how it has financially impacted us. And we want to make sure that industry is at the forefront as it relates to when we return to whatever the new norm is and how we look at what we do to support them. So I do want to thank my colleagues for that. I do appreciate their support, and we will be continuing to have a robust conversation to nail down exactly what the focus of the task force will be and what recommendations will take place in order to put ourselves in a position to better serve the citizens of Philadelphia. Because as a team, I know that that's what we all want to do. So I just want to thank my colleagues, especially Councilmembers Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember O., and Councilmember Brooks. Thank you, Council President.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you and the Councilwoman for agreeing to chair their very, very important committee. You guys are doing a great job. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President Clark. My comments, I'm going to transition a little bit to my planned comments, but I want to thank Councilmember Johnson for when we started our session during the roll call, he made sure to say her name, which is Breonna Taylor. This is a very sad moment in our country, just reflecting on what has transpired, especially when I reflect on the fact that myself, being a former prosecutor and seeing a prosecutor in Kentucky, my same ethnic persuasion takes steps that I find very troubling. I have a lot of things I could say about that. I'm just going to leave that for this moment before I get into a much longer detailed speech. But I want to remind my colleagues regarding next week, September thirtieth at nine thirty A M., we will have continued hearings regarding the economic recovery regarding COVID. These are joint hearings through the Finance Committee, as well as Commerce and Economic Development chaired by our colleague, Councilmember Mark Squilla. And the purpose of these hearings is to continue the conversation that we've been having regarding COVID. We know it has been a global pandemic, but it's also been an economic crisis, especially for our small businesses that have been devastated by this pandemic. Not a day goes by when I'm not driving throughout part of the city, I see a business that I may have used to go to or seen that was in operation has closed its doors because of this pandemic. And I just want to give some, some credit for members of this executive branch, those being Silvy Guy Howard and Bavir Nevin from P I D C. and Christian Dunbar, who were actively engaged in creating the Small Business Relief Fund. That was prior to the work that the state was, prior to even the Payroll Protection Program at the federal level. And when that program was kicked off, you know, we quickly saw the impact of COVID to the tune that during that time period of that program, we received over seven thousand applications requesting a hundred and forty-six million dollars in requests for relief. And yesterday's hearing chaired by Councilmember Dom in Fiscal Stability, he asked questions to our Finance Director Rob Dubois in reference to what available CARES dollars we have to help small businesses. Mr. Dubois stated, this is an urgent matter, and I look forward to the urgency in them addressing this issue and how we can help our small businesses, which is very important. And I think Councilmember Dom made a great point about this is an investment in these businesses that will help our economy and help so many in our city, especially when we have a rate of poverty at twenty-six percent, which I am concerned will only grow due to this pandemic. So we look forward to continuing this conversation, the hearing next week, and look forward to the administration bringing urgency to this issue. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Heenan, had you missed, did you miss any particular vote? I'm getting a note that you wanted to be recorded as voting aye.
I, I, similarly to Councilman O'Neal, just wanted to make sure because of the quickness of, of our, our vote today and the agenda, just wanted to make sure I was recorded aye on all, all resolutions and bills.
Thank you. Thank you. The record shall reflect that Councilman Heenan voted aye on all bills and resolutions. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to start out by number one, thanking my colleague, Councilman Dom, for his resolution in honor of the late, great Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I'm rocking my Ruth attire today. And just wanted to recognize that, you know, it matters. Who we elect matters. Who we have on the Supreme Court obviously matters. When we think about Breonna Taylor, it matters. All of these things matter, and they add up to the importance of voting and participating in our electoral system. So that's one thing I just wanted to, to just mention briefly. The second thing is, we introduced a resolution, a resolution this morning supporting Boys Latin and their partners for the work they're doing around African-American male mentorship and specifically around making sure that they increase the number of African-American male educators. It's so very important. I can tell you, as a public school graduate, I can count the number of African-American male teachers that I had on one hand. Actually, I can count it with two fingers. So the need is great. That need has, has been exasperated over the years. It has not increased. It has not gotten better. And so I really wanted to just applaud them for what they are doing, for making a difference and making sure that, you know, we, we work to make this goal happen. Good things don't just happen. We have to work to make them happen. So I just wanted to applaud them for doing the work, to making that happen and to reaching that goal. So thank you so much, Mr. President, and to all my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for bringing up the very important issue. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gil.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to say very briefly that earlier this week, the municipal courts announced that they are going to delay the execution of evictions until October seventh, which I think we appreciate Judge Dugan's efforts on all of that. I know a lot of my colleagues were deeply involved in communicating with the courts about the urgency of finding common sense resolutions. We're trying to work it out so people get notification and that they can exercise their rights. But at the same time, as next week comes and another rent due date becomes clear, thousands of Philadelphians are still at a point of deep uncertainty and, and have a tremendous amount of anxiety. We said this before, the federal payments ran out on July thirty first. People have not gotten checks in August or September. And what we are worried about most of all is that we want to keep people stable. We learned in the post-pandemic crisis from, or the post-economic crash in the two thousand eight, two thousand ten, when we failed to keep people housing stable, when we didn't stop the foreclosures from happening in communities. All of our communities lost, but in particular, black wealth was lost and black home ownership was lost in our city. It's part of the reason we went from almost sixty percent homeownership to basically fifty-fifty renter homeowner. We are trying to keep people housing stable. If it is a matter of money, then we need to negotiate out the terms of debt and supports for communities who have been able to otherwise, you know, be able to support themselves. And the recognition, again, that these are families, these are single heads of households, they are mostly women, they are veterans and are seniors, and it will touch every district. So I just wanted to express that I have a lot of gratitude to the courts for taking action, but it's really not that sustainable, and it makes more sense to refocus our energies back onto practical solutions. We started a diversion program. We need to fund it. Making sure that the state focuses in on talking about rent subsidies, homeownership, foreclosure, stoppages, instead of trying to wrangle from Governor Wolf a discussion about school sports. They need to focus on the things that actually matter. And finally, and finally, I just wanted to let my colleagues know and especially execute gratitude to, to the members of the Children and Youth Committee. The City of Philadelphia has decided to remove all of its Philadelphia students from Deveraux. This was in the news, as many of you know, for shocking levels of abuse and sexual abuse in particular of vulnerable children and families. What this means, this is a very, I think this was the right decision by, by DHS, but I think what it calls to account is that we have a state that needs to take action on oversight and reform of these institutions. This is not something that county by county we should be subjected to. We should not be reading about all of these things in the newspapers of what's happening across counties to vulnerable young people. These young people are ours, and they do come home. They come home to us. And the most important thing is, they also, we spend about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars on average per child per year on these facilities. Their families and they, and our city deserves better. But this has to start with the state. The, the last thing I'll just say is that it does also make it incumbent upon us as a city to welcome our kids back home. DHS and C B H are hard at work creating alternatives to large institutional facilities that have functioned as too big to fail. They are looking for places for smaller homes for young people that are close to home, they are trauma-informed, they're only twelve to fifteen young people, rather than like hundreds that we pack into facilities that are counties and counties away. They will, they will require a conversation with district council members to make sure that they fit in with communities and neighborhoods. I want to express gratitude to my former colleague, Janie Blackwell, who welcomed one into her West Philadelphia District, and to her, to her successor, Councilmember Gautier, who will be ushering in one of these smaller facilities in the West Philadelphia community. We're trying to figure it out. It's extraordinarily complicated, and our children need help, and they're crying out for it. But this is where we come in, because when we talk about safety, when we talk about families, when we talk about healing, and when we talk about neighborhoods, we have to be that village. And it's really hard for a lot of the children, some of whom have experienced things that, you know, God help us, none of us should ever have had to have gone through, but we need to know that we were there for them when they needed us the most. So I look forward to continuing to having those conversations with my colleagues, and I want to, again, express gratitude to the Committee for Children and Youth for being bold and brave in a difficult moment, but we're charting the right course. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Councilman Jones? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear you say Jones. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to thank Member Green for citing the contributions and the impact of COVID on minority, and I want to add female businesses. We're getting ready to enter into Med Week, where nationally, we recognize those contributions, and in particular, Philadelphia. If you've been following this, barbershops, beauty salons were hit hard because of their inability sometimes to be recognized as contributors to small businesses in, in commercial corridors in particular. Many of them had trouble substantiating their income and therefore were bypassed by some of the relief efforts. I want to cite the fact that the state, through relief efforts, is pulling together a pool of funds specifically for them, which we are thankful for. And during Med Week, we want to also let you know that there are workshops that will be dedicated to those contributions and to those programs that assist them to stay in business. Two weeks ago or so, we had a offline conversation right before we went into council, talking about the commercial corridors like Germantown Avenue, like Market Street, like Ridge Avenue, where small businesses often who are underinsured, underfinanced, took a hit during the uprising and may never, ever come back. But I want to particularly give a shout out and thanks to the Commerce Department, the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, P I D C., and the African-American Chamber and the Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, C D F Is, particularly West Philadelphia Financial, Fred Burnett, they did a hell of a job. Packaging, providing technical assistance, so that as many small businesses that could be crowded onto that life raft were. The news would have been more bleak, the outcomes more devastating, had they not done so. So during Med Week, I need my colleagues to plug in, go to the website, find a workshop you can virtually zoom into, in particular, put the word out to small businesses that can use some of the resources during Med Week, some of the information during Med Week, and some of the financial relief funds that have been gathered. So we should put our money where our mouth is. Widesworth Avenue matters, and Fifth Street in Maria's District matters, Market Street to Main Street. We need to fight for these small businesses so that they can be alive. There's nothing worse. We need to fight for these small businesses so that they can be alive. There's nothing worse than going out of town and going to a mall, and all of the stores are the same. The McDonald's is the same as the McDonald's. The Gap is the same as the Gap. The, um, the burger places, the, the small, uh, clothing stores are the same. It is the uniqueness of our commercial corridors that makes Philly's shopping experience great. Ain't no other place, and I know I use broken English, like Denise's Bakery. None. And so we need to fight for those small businesses that are unique. Deveraux up at Overbrook Train Station had a line going outside of the parking lot down the street just so that people could get authentic soul food. We need to fight for businesses like that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I think, uh, Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Council President. I want to make sure we didn't go over Councilman Johnson, or did you just want me to move up?
No, we had a, we had a side conversation.
Oh, you all right?
A lot of side conversations that I had, so sometimes you guys think I'm not on top of it, but there's a lot of stuff going on.
Well, listen, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Council President, now listen, I just wanted to start by saying, um, a special thank you to, uh, Councilman, uh, Jones. Uh, Councilman Jones, thank you for keeping the legacy alive, the work alive relative to Med Week. It really, the work, all of the effort going into what will happen, really chimes well with, uh, Councilwoman Maria Canona Sanchez. Folks don't remember when COVID start. They remember the eighty-five million dollar appropriation that council made, but they don't see all of the work that went in behind the scenes that members of this body. I'm thinking about those calls, Councilman Green, that, uh, when you just read off those stats about the number of, of Philadelphia business owners who, um, responded and applied, uh, for support from our program when the demand, you know, was just through the roof, and we knew we didn't have enough in terms of revenue to support it. So I want to say to Councilwoman Sanchez, um, um, Jones, uh, Green, um, uh, Squilla, thank you for, uh, working in partnership with the Commerce Department, when Sylvia and her team, along with PIDC, were standing up those efforts. That was the specs about the who's. How are we marketing to make sure black and brown small businesses are getting access to that money? I mean, you asked the tough questions, and when you did that work, there was no camera on the Zoom watching us or a microphone recording what you did. So I want to say thank you, um, about that. Uh, Council President Clark, um, I want to say specifically, um, to you, along with the Kenny administration, um, because it was announced, but I just want to be honest, President, tell you that I missed the announcement, um, uh, that was made by the administration, along with PHDC, um, for agreeing to use CARES money to double the renter subsidy. It goes up to fifteen hundred dollars a month, and landlords hopefully will be in support of this effort, and it will, uh, be a huge help, uh, to renters, and the deal is done. So on, um, you know, behalf of members of our body, and I think I can say this, each of us, we do work in a lot of different areas, but a whole lot of what we do, you don't see us with a bullhorn, you know, shouting it out, saying, hey, look at what we just did. Aren't we great? You know, we're saviors. You elected us, and we just, we came to rescue you. Some of us just get the work done, and we move on to the next issue, because it's the legacy that we've been working to address some of these tough issues for many years. And I have to say this because I just looked at a picture, and Council President Clark, the Law Department is working on something for me. I talked to you very generally about it, but we're going to be rolling it out soon. And while it is a contin, it's some work that is current that we're going to do, I want to be real clear and noting that, um, a people without knowledge of its history is like a tree without its roots. Anyone acting as if any of the work that we are doing in this body for the diversity and inclusion, to increase homeownership, to address renters, to support small businesses, black and brown and women, none of what we are doing right now is new. We stand on the shoulders of some people who did this work long before it was popular. And I just want to make sure that as we continue to move forward, I'm looking at Councilman Johnson and your efforts to lead this body relative to gun violence, uh, uh, eliminating it and all of that work. I mean, how can you talk about your work, Councilman Johnson, and not lift up Benny Swan? Not think about James Mills when you talk about connecting people who were in the streets to access the jobs? So council, when we think about the work that we're doing, I hope that we will continue to do it as a collective, each of us individually. Lord knows we do some dynamic work, and I'm proud to be a part of this body. That, that, you, you remember what they said about the councils of the past. I'm not going to tell y'all what that man said about the council, uh, of the past, but I'll tell you what, there's not a damn soul that can say that about the body of work that this council has. I'm talking about each one of you individually, or when they look at our work as a collective. Let's keep fighting and keep pushing, because the people demand results. Thank you all.
Amen. Thank you, Council Lady. Thank you. And, uh, we will continue to do the people's business. Uh, it is a awesome privilege, actually, for us to be able to do that. So thank you very much. Um, I believe that concludes our speeches. So with that, uh, I will recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that counsel. Stand adjourned until Thursday, October first, 2020 at ten a.m.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. You've been moved in probably second to council stand adjournment for Thursday, October first, 2020, ten a.m. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Have a good day and be safe. Thank you all. Have a good day.